Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our July Planning Board meeting in the town of Yorktown. Would you please join me in the presence of allegiance, stand?
My pleasure.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the absence of our Chair, Richard Farn, who's in Seattle, Washington this week. Maybe we all can join him one day. I'll be running the meeting this evening. First item on our agenda is correspondence, and we have one item of correspondence, at least in the official record, which is a stop-work order which was issued by New York State DOT for work being done at the Lowe's site on 202. Apparently, they haven't filed everything they needed to DOT's satisfaction to just to make sure where they are in the right-of-way and things of that sort. I don't know what the latest is on that, John, if you know anything else?
I only know what the letter says, which is they were doing the wall and needed to go into the right-of-way, maybe knowingly or unknowingly, and DOT stopped them until they get a permit to do so.
Okay, but that's not affecting us in any other way. Any other comments on that? Okay. We will now turn to review of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was June 26, I believe. Is there any comments to the minutes as presented?
None.
Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are accepted. Thank you. We have several items on our regular session agenda tonight, the first being a decision statement on the Walgreens CVS Pharmacy application for an amended approval, actually. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant? Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Lucia Kyokio with Cadeen Fader on behalf of the applicant. We were here last month with a proposed amended site plan resolution. I went through a little bit through the history of why we're at this point and why we're asking for the amended site plan resolution, but we want to move forward with the project. I can certainly review that for you, but I think we're...
Just briefly, for the benefit of those who are watching, just if you can recap what you're looking for in the amended approval, and then we'll go forward.
Great. So, when it was approved, it was a CVS proposal. It's now a Walgreens store that's being proposed. The Walgreens store is essentially the same as a CVS store with respect to size, location, design at the site. We're asking for an amended approval to basically split the construction of the Walgreens store and all the work on the premises that the applicant will do, and the off-site improvements that are part of the project. The town will actually construct those improvements, but the applicant will pay for that work to be done. So, basically, we're just asking for the amended site plan resolution to reflect that.
So, we're splitting off the roadwork from the site plan, but nothing else is really changing?
Right. And what the split is, is who's actually doing the work?
Right.
So, the town would actually be doing the work, and we're working with the town engineer. He's got some, he has the drawings to his satisfaction, and we'll work with the town board in order to issue the RFP, set the funds and the escrow, so that work can proceed.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
None.
Staff, John?
We have nothing at this time.
Jim?
Nothing.
Okay. I'll take a motion, then, to approve the amended site plan as described and as set forth in the draft resolution.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next item on our regular agenda is a decision statement in connection with the Staples Plaza Battery Energy Storage System request. Anyone here from the applicant on the Staples project?
The applicant's rep called us today and is ill, and asked that we continue without his presence.
Okay. So, my recollection of this is to, they're adding some additional battery storage units on the property immediately adjacent to those that are already there, and I think they're using four parking spaces to do so. That seems to be the gist of the application.
Yes.
Any comments, questions? John, nothing? Jim?
Nothing further.
Nothing from me.
All right. No reason not to proceed, then? I'll take a motion to this.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good. Shrub Oak International School is requesting an extension, one-year time extension. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the law firm is Aaron Steinmetz here on behalf of Shrub Oak International School. As the Chair indicated, we are requesting an extension of the last site plan resolution of approval. We would, I've spoken to Mr. Ciarce, I've encouraged him to please get us some comments back on the stormwater drainage. He knows that. He's assured me and DTS Providence that we would be receiving them. We have not, so, as a result, we would ask for an extension.
Any comments?
No problem.
How long is the extension?
One year.
One year.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Keep going. Okay. Number six on the agenda is a consideration of several documents which would lead to the approval of the Underhill Farns project. Okay? We have been presented with draft resolutions, a draft negative declaration, which is, last time I looked at it, was about forty pages, and supporting documentation on that is quite extensive. We also received within the last couple of hours, which I did not get a chance to look at, further modifications and changes to that draft resolution. And considering the importance of this project, there are a couple of things that are on my mind, and I'd like to just raise them with my colleagues. I think that we have devoted considerable time and energies to this project to get it to the point where it is. I would prefer personally that this matter be acted upon after we've had a proper and adequate chance to review everything, including the latest changes to the proposed resolutions. I also would prefer personally that the five-member board deal with this when Rich returns from his vacation. I think we've all had a lot of input and a lot of ideas and a lot of thoughts that have contributed to where we are on this project. I don't think a short delay to allow all of those objectives to take place, including our review, and also to have Rich get a chance to weigh in on everything, would hurt or delay significantly. I spoke to Rich this afternoon, and he is available next week for a special meeting to conclude this, one way or the other. And so, I posed that question. I'm certainly open to discussions. I'm open to hearing the applicant weighing in on the draft, because they often do. I don't know if they're prepared to do that this evening. I'm interested in your thoughts.
I, my sense would be, if we could do a meeting, there's only one meeting in July, one in August, which makes it difficult.
But we can do a special.
Special meeting on next Monday?
Next Monday or Tuesday.
You'd have to, we couldn't notice it in time, so you'd have to push it two weeks from today.
So, we'd have to be the 31st.
How much, no, what, we need ten days on these?
Yes. Five paper notice, it's ten for, it's five in the paper, yes.
Yeah, we've discussed this so many times. I mean, I don't see why we can't move forward.
It's up to the board?
That's just one person. I, I know all I'm going to know about it.
Sure. Has the applicant seen the resolution?
Yes.
And the amendments made? Any feedback or comments from the applicant that alter the resolution at all?
Anything that was discussed with us since the resolution was released in its draft form on Friday is embodied in your late-breaking. So, any discussions with myself, Jim, Robin, and the applicant's representative, if accepted, is offered in that late-breaking document that you have in front of you, which is, all any of those proposed revisions are in, you know, color-coded, so you can easily make them out from what you saw on Friday. That also goes for the neg deck, the draft neg deck. They're all color-coded, and all of those are predominantly grammatical and syntax changes for clarity, some adding some phraseology to make sure what is being said in there is very clear. There's no substantive changes in the neg deck.
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read those, that last round, that came in, what, about 3:30 today or so?
Yeah, there's not, there's not a whole host of them, so you could go through them tonight if you cared to. I don't know what the board, you know, it's up to the board, obviously, so.
And the other side issue that I have is we've been, we've closed the public hearing. We closed the written comment period, and those deadlines and dates have passed, and yet we still have material coming in, which I haven't looked at, but I see it, and I don't know whether or not, you know, what impact do we give to that material at this point?
You referring to things like the...
Historical Commission.
Yeah, I'd be with Willa. That's not going to stop, right? The project's going to get underway, and there are going to be people commenting on how good it's proceeding or how poorly it's proceeding.
Well, that's different, you know. How things unfold afterwards, and it's just like with this stop-work order from DOT, things happen during construction. But I'm not concerned about that. I mean, do we, what do we do with materials like, you know, we told her, I think, the last time that they weren't able to present anything more. I don't want to, I want to just turn it over.
Just put it in the file, the way all the other correspondence is. They missed their deadline by more than two weeks, so it goes into the file. I mean, that...
Do we just keep extending this deadline for...
No, the deadline has not...
Deadline is the deadline.
That deadline has not been extended.
But we're giving validity to new information that came after the deadline.
No, no, that's not being included.
Let me clarify that, and Jim, you can jump in any point. What we're working on now is the final environmental analysis under the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Yes.
These are our findings with respect to this project. We have been presented, as you well know, over the months with various issues and concerns and areas to explore. Now, we're pulling it all together, and we're at the point where we can make an environmental decision that there are or are not any adverse environmental impacts. And we've been presented tonight with what, you know, the negative declaration. That's what we're working on. The comment I made about additional public comment, agency comments, is not, that's not something we can or should consider or extend that deadline. That's come and gone, and I agree. That's, that's all, I think I speak for all of us when I say that. The time for that input has come and gone.
If I could, Aaron, I would like to add to that, that nothing that I saw today from the historic, the Heritage Commission, changes what you should do, whether it's tonight or whenever you have your meeting to vote on this. They have a right to present a petition to the town board, but that doesn't stop what you have to do under the zoning ordinance as a site plan approving agency and as a lead agency under SECRE. In fact, you're under a time deadline of sixty-two days from the complete application. Arguably, that time is right up, just about up. Their last submission was in May, so we're running up close to the deadline, but I don't see the, I don't see what the Heritage Commission sent to you today as being a basis to delay action or to include what they said into your decision-making process.
I got a question. Can we, Jim, can we vote on a neg deck, get that out of the way, and then hash over the resolution? We can do that?
Yes. If, if everybody had a chance to read the resolution, the neg deck that was circulated over the weekend?
Yes.
There are not a lot of substantive changes, and John and I can go through them right now if you want, but...
Do that.
Nothing will change on the merits of the neg deck. We, and I have to tell you, a lot of work went into this neg deck, and the quality of the information that came out through this process was really remarkable to me. I've been through the EIS process probably close to a hundred times throughout my career, and most of it is stuff that is studied or reported on because the SECRE handbook says it should be, but it's not useful information. This information here was targeted, was useful, not only from the applicant, but also from the public. And so, I think, I think it would be fair for us to go over with you what those changes are, and I think voting on it would be appropriate if that's the way the board feels.
And let's go through the changes. Okay. You want to start? Okay?
Good. That would make me more comfortable, because we don't know what the changes are.
I know.
And I've read through this document thirty-nine pages today.
Uh-huh.
I'm fearful that we're going to look at that document and then vote on a document that's been amended without knowing what the amendments are.
I agree. I did not, I, for one, didn't get to read the changes.
Right. I didn't either. We just got them, so I think we should go through them.
Okay. Let's proceed.
All right. On page four, paragraph B, about water quality, we had some additional inserted that was recommended by Joe Rena to put some technical engineering into the discussion of water quality, and I think that information is not only appropriate but helpful to the board.
Jim, do you know the difference between the color of the fonts, the purple versus the, what, the orange?
Yes. The purple was submitted by the applicant's attorney, Mark Blanchard, and the orange was submitted by Joe Rena.
Are these changes, so what about chronologically? Were these changes, all of these changes from the most recent document, or is it inclusive of changes in the past document?
There were changes from the document you received over the weekend.
Okay. And how do we identify those?
By the coast.
That's them.
Okay. So, all of the, all of the ones there are new?
So, you're, I think what they did was they compared the first one we got to the...
Now, there were some proposed changes that John and I did not agree with, and we did not incorporate those.
Got it.
Okay.
So, if we go on to paragraph C, there was a conclusory sentence added, also on page four. Paragraph D, there was a conclusory sentence added in the first paragraph. In the second paragraph, there was also a conclusory paragraph. There are a few changes which I would consider to be more in the nature of grammar or syntax, such as changing different to independent. As I said before, I'm not Shakespeare. I don't write for a living, so I don't take offense if someone wants to change what I wrote. At the bottom of that page, there was some language added about the ability of the town to do future road improvements at the intersection, that what we're doing now does not foreclose the possibility of future improvements. At the top of page five, it's just a, another conclusory sentence or phrase stating that the applicant has more than mitigated their traffic impact. They've helped to solve an existing town problem and allows the town to plan for traffic growth in the future. In paragraph E, noise levels, this is something the applicant added that they've committed to, that they will carefully manage noise during construction. That's something that's usually handled by the town building staff and the applicant at work meetings, but I think it's helpful language to have. Again, Joe Rena took something out of the solid waste section. He felt it was more appropriate in another section, and we have no problem with that. Joe Rena also added some language for the sediment control permit, the speedies permit, which we think is helpful. The applicant's engineer added down below that Barton and Lojoudis have commented on and endorsed the erosion control plan for flooding. Joe Rena added some language there that the system is designed to accommodate a one-hundred year storm. I thought we said that somewhere, but apparently, we didn't say it here, so we have no problem including it again. Leaching, Joe Rena proposed some changes here, which I think are helpful. In drainage, again, Joe Rena proposed some changes about how they're going to manage stormwater on-site. And then, we jumped down to the bottom of page six, a few conclusory statements about what the planning board is finding as we drafted it. Then, we skip over to page seven, number four. We took out the town board, because the town board has no role, not even an advisory role in this application, and we thought inclusion there would be, of the town board is inappropriate. No offense to the town board members.
You can go home, then.
Okay. Skipping over to page nine, we felt it unnecessary, the applicant had proposed to add that, well, first, the applicant proposed to add that since they will be maintaining the ice pond and the walking trails, which will be open to the public, there'll be no burden to the taxpayer. In the next paragraph, the applicant proposed to add that the approving agency has determined that no evidence was presented to support some suggestions made by the Heritage Commission. We don't think it's necessary to say that. I would, as we say elsewhere, and what I certainly believe to be true, is that the evidence, what I consider to be evidence, after forty-three years of being an attorney, the credible evidence supports the conclusion that this was not a Revolutionary War campground and that it was not used in connection with the Underground Railroad. Down at the bottom of page nine, the applicant wanted to add that HPI's meeting with the planning board was an open meeting. Again, I have no problem with that language. Going over to page ten, there's some changes made about adding special meetings and collaborative meetings, and we have, we have no problem with that language. The applicant proposed adding some language that some information presented by the Heritage Commission was unsupported, and that they had been specifically invited to submit their invitation, and John and I felt it's unnecessarily to say that, because everyone was invited to submit information. There was no special invitation to the Heritage Commission. It was just everyone was invited to submit whatever they felt was relevant and important for the planning board to know. Skipping over to page eleven, the applicant wanted wording, adding that the planning board must not make an unsupported finding. I don't have a problem with that language going in. I didn't think it was necessary, but I did think it was necessary to take out their proposed change that based upon a complete lack of evidence, the planning board should find that the property was not used in connection with the Underground Railroad. Again, I think the credible evidence supports the conclusion that it was not, but I don't think I can say that there was no evidence that it wasn't. Okay. Skipping over to the bottom of page eleven, that they added language that the applicant made a number of changes, most particularly to the design of the site to allow the retaining wall and the vegetation along 118 to be kept in place, and that was done in response to suggestions from the planning board, which I think is accurate. On page twelve, the middle, again, the, they want it noted that the planning board and the staff had asked for some changes throughout the process. On Glen Rock, they just added that it's trees being removed is unavoidable. I think that's self-evident, but skipping over to page thirteen, the first full paragraph, we didn't like the way that sentence read as the applicant proposed it, but we understand the point they were trying to make, so John and I spent some time redrafting it. I'm going to skip over changes that are purely grammatical.
Right. Okay.
On page fourteen, number eight, intensity of use, the applicant wanted to add that twelve units per acre is as of right. John and I don't believe that to be the case. It is a range that's acceptable, but I don't think it's as of right. Further down on that page, the applicant wanted to add that their traffic improvements will mitigate the adverse impact, and we believe that to be true, so we don't have a problem adding that. All right. Then, we skip over, we get to skip a couple of pages here, which is good.
I think, good.
On page eighteen of forty, they wanted to add that some of the units will be ownership units, which we have no problem with. It's an accurate statement. Again, on page twenty, they wanted to add that the, without this action, the Underhill House would be inaccessible to the public, which we don't have any objection to adding that. On page twenty-two, there's a couple of small changes identifying the Underhill House as an adaptive reuse, which is accurate. And on page twenty-three, top paragraph, the applicant asked that we add that the most desirable outcome is to retain the existing stone wall and the trees adjacent to it. Again, it's a true statement, so we have no problem. Page twenty-five, they wanted to add to the water courses section that the site is subject to the jurisdiction of the New York City DEP, and there's a conclusory sentence at the bottom that all impacts regarding... bottom that all impacts regarding water courses have been mitigated. On 27, at the bottom, they just added a few things to note that the applicant agreed to a lot of the changes which had been requested by the board and/or the public throughout The, going over to page 29, they wanted to add some language about the legacy of the Underhill family in the town, which we had no problem with. Small changes to the fiscal analysis, but mostly wording changes. And they added some language about traffic improvements being requested by the town and the public. They also added that the concept of reducing the speed limit on Underhill Avenue was recommended by their consultant, which is true. They wanted some language added that the tandem parking spaces for the, or the 96 parking spaces for the townhouse units are code compliant. And other than a few conclusory sentences, we skip over to 37, and there was some language again added by Joe Rena here. I'd ask that the board members take a second and look at that section on 37.
Stormwater?
And I think it, you know, John and I looked at this. We had no problem with it. I think it provides some good detail, and I want to thank Joe for getting us this information. For the public, essentially what it says is that, it describes what steps New York City DEP is looking for and New York State DEC is looking for in issuing a Speedy's permit for this project. And as far as green infrastructure is concerned, they added some language that they are going to be using green infrastructure in connection with these stormwater improvements. So I hope the board agrees that those changes were not substantive. There's nothing that we said that John and I recommended that the board say that the applicant changed, or anything that the applicant wanted us to say that we gave in on except for just clarifications. That's what I think this, these changes essentially boil down to.
Jim, I do have one question. On page 13 and page 24, there's reference to the percentage of the site that'll be preserved as wetland, as well as landscape active or passive open space. It's highlighted because I think those two numbers don't line up. One says 16 percent, one says 18 percent.
Yeah, those are there for us to finalize. So there's a mix in there of wetlands and open space, and some is open space, so we'll reconcile those numbers. But it's not less than 16 percent nor more than 18.
Got it.
And either way, we don't believe it to be significant.
That's an incredibly well-written document, I think, you know, from first pass, and then these additions or changes just improve it, so.
Incredible amount of work. Thank you, John. And Rob, Robin?
I think there was a team effort on this one.
You know it, yes.
Yes.
There was.
So do we have a motion to accept?
Before we get to that, I just want to speak to the process that we followed. At various times as we were reviewing this project, a number of people have suggested that we adopt instead of a negative declaration, a positive declaration earlier in the process, which would have triggered a different kind of review under seeker. And we were resistant to doing that because, as Jim alluded to in his comments earlier, it would have opened up all kinds of issues required by law that were not necessarily relevant to this project. And what we did instead was we focused our attention on the issues that were directly relevant and consequential to this particular project and eliminated the need to go into all kinds of ancillary things that really wouldn't change the final result. I have gone a number of positive decks over the years in different capacities, and you end up with a thick book, which, you end up with 40 pages anyway of stuff that might be relevant when you're all said and done. So the test for us is whether or not we have taken that required hard look at the consequences of this project. And I have questioned on an ongoing basis, as has everyone on this panel, the adequacy of that search, the adequacy of that hard look. And we have finally have a document that does, in my opinion, adequately pull it all together. Requisite hard look is in here, in my opinion. I wasn't sure if we were going to get there, or how or when we were going to get there, but I think we're at that point. We have had, what, almost two dozen meetings on this?
Forty pages of hard look.
Forty pages of hard look, yeah. Are there any other comments or questions for staff or Jim before we proceed?
No, other than thanking John and his department, Jim and your department, for all the hours and hard work that you've put in pulling all this together and the documents that lay before us, I, as a new member of the planning board, appreciate the work that was put into this. Thank you.
I will say that how the planning department kept track of everything coming in was impressive to me because any time I needed something, it was at my fingertips in seconds, and it's not easy to do that. I mean, look at all the stuff that came in today alone, yet they managed to get it in front of you today. Nobody can say that things were being hidden, or things were getting lost in the mail, or getting lost in the ethos. There's a lot of documentation here, and a lot of it is very good, and I also think we need to commend the applicant's consultants and the towns' consultants, too. I mean, the towns' consultants produced a report today on historical, and that language was incorporated into our site plan approval resolution, so.
Shall we proceed?
Proceed.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank the public for the participation. I've always felt that it's a necessary part of what we do, and the more involved the public is, the more comfortable I am with what we do up here. We don't always agree with some of the comments that get made, and some of them include information that, you know, is questioned by the applicant or answered by the applicant, but that's the process that we go through. And, you know, these kinds of books include all of the comments, written and otherwise, that the public makes. So we don't just sit here and shake our head yes and go on with what we do. We do listen and read those comments, and I think that's a critical part of what we do, and I think the public's participation is essential to getting our work completed. So I just want to thank everybody for their, you know, it's not easy to leave home and come sit at a meeting like this, and it's sometimes boring, and it's sometimes not the topic that you're here for, but it's helpful to what we do, so.
Well said.
And for Sergio, too.
Before I go to the next step, is there any comments that the applicant would like to make, or do you have on the proposed resolutions that are before us tonight?
No comments at this time.
Okay. You've got them in already, right? Okay.
So we start with the neg deck?
We lead agency on this already?
Yep.
You'll declare it now.
All right, so let's do that.
And then you can adopt a neg deck.
Let's have a motion.
Motion to declare a neg deck.
No.
Lead agencies.
Lead agencies.
Lead agents.
Do I have a motion declaring the planning board to lead agency on this application?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead now.
We make, I make a motion and we accept the neg deck.
Adopt a negative declaration on this.
Thank you. Second.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we consider the resolution. Are we ready to do that? Before us, we have a draft resolution approving a site plan, a special use permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and tree permit for the Underhill Farm site plan. Is there anything that staff or council want to bring to our attention on this? Is it in final form here?
We've got the revised copy.
Yeah, I do, and if you want to...
Yes.
Let's see, I didn't see what...
It looks like the only thing is the fire inspector.
And page nine.
That's him.
Yeah, there it is.
There's also some things added from the historical, I believe. Is that today, John, or was that?
Let's go through it.
The original draft.
From the fire consultant, I mean, the fire...
The historic consultant.
The historic consultant, that was finalized on Friday, but we have in here that the content of that is a condition of compliance of the approval, which they call for some, and these are things that they're reiterating from their first report, which never got picked up in the final report from the applicant's consultant, for whatever reason. It is the monitoring of the excavation for any artifacts that may be still intact in any way. It also includes some further documentation from the historic record, for instance, census records which would indicate who was living at the property, you know, which families, because the Underhills, I think, sold or to the Kears and so on and so forth, and that is good historical information for some of the interpretive things that the applicant is beholden to do by virtue of the state's letter of resolution. So those are the kind of things that are embodied in that memo that you have.
Just so people are aware, included in this resolution is a section which recites the summary of what the application is. It recites the fact that we just adopted a negative declaration on the environmental impact of this application. It recites the site plan and all the drawings that were submitted by the applicant, and I believe it should recite the commentary there. Does it recite all the memos and things that we received?
Yes.
Okay. All right, there they are, yeah.
Yeah, on the bottom.
So it recites all of those things. It talks about parking requirements, it talks about the specific plans for lighting and erosion control and things of that sort, and the language that's added talks about waiving the parking, you know, allowing parking in the front yards due to the particulars circumstances of the site, and it does require further plans to be submitted, for example, on the use of the mansion. So that's not over and done with, and that comes back to us when they decide what indeed they want to do with it. I just wanted to make that known because that was a concern to many people, and there were a number of conditions on how construction is going to be handled and things of that sort. If there's anything significant, let me know.
Nothing out of the ordinary.
The, on page nine, I feel like a previous planning board member here, but on page nine in the third resolved, added, there's a double approved.
Oh, the previous, yes. Okay. So just strike, strike one of those. Anything else? The applicant seen the resolution? Any questions, issues, or good? All right.
I'm good.
I would just say that in the Tree Bank Fund, you need a TBD.
I saw that. How do we, well, that'll be done when the final resolution is put together?
When the final plans are, before they're signed and ready for signature.
Jim, anything else?
No, I think I've certainly had enough say in this document. I have nothing more to say.
Oh, God, two years in the making.
Well.
Yeah, no, we did our job. We did our job. We're at that point where...
All right, so we did the lead agency, we did the neg deck, now we need a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we go home now?
No, there's more, no, there's more to do.
I just want to thank the planning board and the staff. I know this wasn't an easy one for you, but I think you'll be happy with the result. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience. Stick to it, this. Stuck to it, boy.
Motion to close the regular session of tonight's meeting.
Motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Give people a moment if they want to step out. Guiding Eyes for the Blind is number seven on our agenda tonight.
What am I going to do with all this extra time?
I don't know.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. David Steinmetz from the Law Firm of Zerrin. And Steinmetz, I am joined on behalf of Guiding Eyes for the Blind this evening by Bill Ma and Dr. B. from Guiding Eyes, Joe Rena, our project engineer, Tony Russo, our project environmental consultant, and Phil Greeley, Dr. Phil Greeley, our traffic consultant. But before I go into the presentation, because Jim is so Shakespearean to me, and obviously you all spent so much time on that resolution, I did very quickly Google Shakespeare and dogs, and apparently Shakespeare has written an awful lot about dogs, and I had a whole bunch of quotes, but I'll be short with the one that I found. "The cat will meow, but the dog will have his day." So that's from Hamlet, apparently. "I'm here tonight because I want the dog to have his day." We're here, we're here in connection with Guiding Eyes for the Blind, and we're trying to get a wonderful new kennel for the dogs here in the town. The town board was terrific in processing our rezoning application, and we were successful in getting the interchange zone amended to allow for dog kennels. We have a site that you are all familiar with at the intersection of Mohansick and Route 202 that was previously owned by Temple Israel and previously approved by the town for a synagogue, event space, school, a substantial amount of parking, et cetera. I should say, since we last appeared in front of your board months and months ago, Bill, Tom, Dr. B. have closed on the property, so Guiding Eyes now owns that property. We're now at a point where Joe and the rest of our team have been able to bring our site plan along far enough that we want to get the site plan process underway, particularly now that they are property owners. The proposal is for a 35,500 approximate square foot building on the site... site. Aaron, you'll recall, we talked a little bit about that at a prior meeting, and Tony can explain what the DEC has signed off on. We've also had some back and forth with the tree commission about tree removal, and Tony can briefly discuss that. And Phil Greeley will talk about the traffic analysis that we've done and that we've submitted to the board. We have a single point of entrance, egress, egress, ingress, egress from Mohansik, why that's safe and appropriate, why it's in the right location. We're also going to talk about the circulation on site, which is somewhat restricted. The public can access some of it, staff will access the balance of it, but there is full 360 degree circulation on the property for safety and fire access, et cetera. And lastly, it's probably a combination of Joe and Tony, there is some wetland and stream mitigation that is proposed as part of this, we're going to talk about that. You'll also recall that our neighbor Signs Inc. had some encroachment onto Temple Israel's property. That's being folded into this application. Our client is magnanimous enough to be carving out some land and giving it over to Signs Inc. so that they can basically keep their parking where it is. Joe and our surveyor can draw our lines accordingly, and we will still have a sufficient and zoning compliance site. So I'll see if I can come up with any other Shakespearean quotes, but otherwise I'm turning it over to Joe.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Any quotes, Joe?
No quotes from me.
Okay.
Since the last time you saw us, which was, I believe, in January or February of this year, the site has not gone through any change as far as the overall footprint of the site. What has changed is the configuration or the shape of the building, but it's in the same location that the original footprint that you saw. There's been a lot of work done with the architect and with Dr. B as to the interior planning of the building and how the, how the building is going to function, and it came, flushed out into the current footprint. So since then, we've submitted a complete, a full set of engineering site plans with all the necessary details from all the setbacks, grading, where, where the parking spaces are, all the required dimensioning. So the site, the project itself, oh, and in addition to that, we submitted an updated EAF, a traffic report, a tree mitigation report, and a, and a SWIP, a draft SWIP. On the overall site plan, we've prepared a zoning schedule that demonstrates that we were complying with all aspects of the zoning requirements. We've also provide, provided a parking schedule and a schedule that shows the disturbances as it relates to buffer and wetland disturbance, as well as non buffer or wetland areas. So as David had mentioned, the access point is the same, it's the existing driveway location. The, the access driveway is centered over that. As you come into the site, there is a stream crossing and wetland crossing right in this location here. Currently, there's a 12-inch reinforced concrete pipe culvert in that location. We are going to be replacing that with a 36-inch pipe, so we're increasing the capacity quite a bit to minimize or eliminate any backup or flooding upstream of this location, an erosion that has been occurring over years. So that's part of this, and that's, that's our only wetland disturbance itself is, is that crossing right there. And it's a little over 600 square feet. As you enter the site, the driveway splits here. So as you go to the left, is visitor parking and some employee parking in the front part of the building right here. The main access or front door is in this location right here. If you, as you go to the right, this is where the gated access begins. This is for employees only. The gate is here, you have circulation around the building, the, the driveway is made wide enough to provide fire access all the way around the building. As you make your way around the back of the building, that area is going to be mostly for van parking, as well as some of the employee parking, and that will continue on the south side of the building. And again, around the east side up to here, and then we have the second gate here. It's going to be one-way flow all the way around the site. As you could see in the parking spaces, you could see that that's hatched differently. That's because we're going to be using porous asphalt for those locations. So as I said, the, the building footprint has changed. Where previously, all the pods for the kennels were in, in the rear of the building, now they wrap around the building on almost, on all, on all sides.
All sides.
Yep. So, and, oh, I just want to mention that the delivery entrance, which was previously on the south side of the building, is now on, on the north side of the building right So the, the building is, itself is a little over 35,000 square feet, almost 35,600 square feet. It's going to be two stories with a partial basement. Now, that's not included in that square footage. The, there's a courtyard area in the center, right in this location here. And then, as I said, we have the pods for the kennels going around the building. So there, altogether, there's 11 pods. Each pod has 10 kennels in each, the, and each of the five kennels has a yard space for exercising the dogs, allowing them to get out outside the kennels. The dogs will be let out, there'll always be a handler with the dogs, and as we've mentioned previously, the, the dogs do not have a tendency to bark, so we don't think that's going to be an issue. And again, they have, they have a handler with them at all times and keeps control of the dogs.
When they're, when they're outside, is that what you meant?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Similar to what's going on at the existing property?
The site itself is also going to be used for training, so you have sidewalks around the site, you've got areas where we've got crossings that, right here, that simulates a crosswalk. So again, training will be occurring on the site as well as off-site, as traditionally done, you, you see that, see that happen in town here. This is the existing conditions plan, which we've seen before. This, this plan is the erosion control plan and tree removal plan, which Tony Russo will discuss with you a little later on. This is the improvement plan, which details the grading and the site utilities.
Joe, I think at our last meeting, you had mentioned that you were considering dropping the overall grade elevation. Have you done that?
Yep, so I was going to get to that. So at this point, we've lowered the site a foot and a half from what, what you had seen previously. So we've essentially balanced, almost completely balanced out the amount of cut and fill on the site, including what's required to cap the landfill. We're, we're, we have a 1,500 cubic yard deficit, so.
You're there.
We're there, yeah. So we'd need to import about 1,500 cubic yards of material at this point. I mean, we're going to, we're going to try to refine that as we go along, but right now we're pretty close to being balanced. So this shows the extent of the grading. As you can see, again, this, this corner here is in cut, and the backside along 202, and on the west side is all in fill. We're showing a construction access road, which is going down along the toe of the fill embankment. That's to access the, the landfill site, which again, Tony Russo will get into that a little bit more later on. All of the stormwater generated within the curb line of, of the pad, so everything within this curb line, everything flowing onto that, which is this cut section here, is going to be picked up and brought into our stormwater management system. We've already done testing out there with the DEP, and we're proposing an infiltrated bed down in this corner right here, right at the toe of the, the slope. This area will be opened up, it'll be an open lawn area, and we're, we're in discussions of considering using that as a, as also an area of, to run the dogs or allow the dogs to have some open space to run around in. We'll be bringing water main into the site along the driveway. That water main will have a, there'll be a hydrant right in front, right off the corner of the building here, and that's where all the fire protection and domestic water will come off of. From the 202 side, there is an existing sewer manhole that was installed as part of the Lowe's project, it was brought across and sits in front of the site here. We're going to extend that up the hill, and we're, we're going to bring our sewer connection off of that. Reason we're extending it up the hill is because of this ravine in here where, where the wetland and the stream flows through, we don't want to go across that, by bringing it up the hill here, we're outside the, the influence of that, right? So we'll also be bringing in our gas service from that location, and possibly the underground electric and communication lines might come in that area, or that, those may come in off of Mohansik, we're not, we're not sure at this point. This is our landfill capping plan, which again, Tony will get into that a little more This is the landscape plan. We've got a tighter view of that.
Joe, what would the, the homeowners, what would their sight line be?
So.
I guess that's what we're looking at now.
So we, at this point, we're going to be disturbing up to within 50 feet of the property line. So we're going to leave a 50-foot of natural buffer between the, the property line and the top of our cut section. That'll be the closest. As you, as you go to the back of the site, that, that gets farther and farther away.
Joe, let me just interrupt. How deep a cut is that at that corner?
It's a little over 15 feet at the highest point.
From existing grade?
From existing grade.
So, so what the homeowner is seeing now, he's going to be?
The top of the building.
He's going to see the top of the building, and 15 feet below is where the pavement is going to be.
That's correct. Correct. So this is the proposed screening that the landscape architect has put together. As you can see, they're carrying that all the way across the entire south side of the property. At our next, at our next meeting, she will be here and she can give you a lot more detail on, on that. But as you can see, there's, you know, it's pretty densely screened. So from a visual point of view, there may be, you know, until the tree's fully mature, there may be a little bit of, of visual connection between that, that homeowner to the south. But once that fully grows in and is mature, I think it's going to provide the adequate So that details that, that south side of the, south side of the site. Let me just get back to that again. And then this details the north side and the landscaping that's going to be occurring around the building and along the entry drive. You see, there's some trees being planted there, and you could see this, the islands are being all fully landscaped, as well as the entryway. In addition to the landscape plan, we've provided a lighting plan, and all said, done, that lighting plan will not create any shed, or create any, you know, off-site lighting that was, that's really going to impact. Again, with the screening, that's going to, that's going to really help. Okay, and that's, that's about all I have. I'm going to ask Tony to come up.
Joe.
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned a culvert going from 12 inches to 36 inches. Can you add a little more detail? Is there an issue upstream? And more importantly, what is downstream?
There is, there is some, there is some erosion that occurs upstream, and that could be because that culvert might be restrictive, and it might be causing some backwater. So, you know, we're there, we're, we're doing the work, it makes sense to go, to bump that up, eliminate any potential for any, and, and also to protect guiding eyes, you know, they don't want to get, you know, have a chance where you get a flash flood and then it wipes out their driveway either. So we're, you know, protecting them at the same time.
And what's downstream? So if you increase the flow, are you going to, what's down there that's going to receive any increased flow?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll, downstream from that, if you've been out to the site, you've got that considerable ravine.
Right.
That goes down along 202. So we're also going to mitigate that by some of what Tony's going to present to you as far as erosion, dealing with some erosion issues that exist there now, and, and enhancing that. So in a sense, we're looking forward towards doing that as part of, as part of our drainage plan. Any other questions?
Good evening, my name is Anthony Russo of Environmental Compliance Services. We were brought in to evaluate a 3.5 acre landfill, C and D, construction demolition landfill on the property site. Guiding eyes for the blind was concerned as to whether or not there are any environmental risks and liabilities with the purchase of the property, having this landfill existing on the site. The site was once, back in 2009, visited by the state pursuant to a complaint by DEP. New York City DEP was concerned about possible off-site water quality contamination, groundwater and surface water, because everything goes to the croton. And so in time, another site visit was conducted in 2018, and from there, test wells went in, and they found trace contaminants in the, in the groundwater, very trace. Nothing that excited the DEC, except that this site sits, was listed on an initiative program, an active landfill initiative program, and so they have to do something about it, they have to investigate it. We came along and said, here we are, we're willing to investigate the 3.5 acre landfill, and here's a work plan. They work, we work very closely with the state. This is Division of Solid Oasis Materials and Materials Management is what it is now. And so here, what Joe put up for me is the approximate limits of the landfill in yellow. And what you see, those little boxes are test pits. We did a test pit investigation that included soil sampling at various points throughout the test pits. And if you look close, if you can see the numbers, you can see test pit 10 through 13, imagine a line going across south of that, everything came up clear. There's no contamination. North of that, approximately one acre, there were test pits, seven of. North of that, approximately one acre, there were test pits, seven of 18 that had waste within them. And this is C and D waste. Stuff like fencing, cyclone fencing, post, bottles, glass, old wood, rotting metal, aluminum siding, that sort of thing. And some of it was at the surface and most of it was near the surface, buried near the surface, within three or four feet. Okay? Of the seven test pits that had waste within, four had the most waste. And so we obtained soil samples below the waste mass and five feet down. And we analyzed for hazardous constituencies, metals, a bunch of other constituencies to determine whether or not there was any contaminated problems that, that could result in groundwater contamination. And what we came up with mostly was just trace contaminants, metals, some semi-volatile organics. And the state agreed with our findings. And so that brought us to a remedy. And the remedy is the cap, the one acre area. They agreed that the 2.5 acres to the south was clear. And that we had to deal with the one acre. Okay, Joe? All right, so here's, okay, here it is. This is the one acre landfill area. And if you see that bump on the top, that's towards 202. But that's a nearby stream that flows and that kind of bumps out to it. So the waste is inside those limits, that, that dash line. And so as I said, some is buried, some is near the surface. And this would involve an 18-inch soil cap, six inches above that as topsoil to promote cover, usually grass. No trees, no shrubs, that sort of thing. And there'll be some boulders or some blocking to go around where the slopes appear to the west, north. And, and that's just to keep that cap back. Okay? And there'll be ground, I'm sorry, surface water management around through swales that will eventually go through a land spreader. This, these, this would be uncontaminated water because it's coming off a clean cap. Okay? The state had put out four wells, as I said, I believe I mentioned that. And they are in the area. There's one well that sits within the limits of that landfill. And so that has to be handled a certain way. That has to remain. And the other three wells remain. There has to be an access road to bring in the materials to cap, construct the cap and maintain the cap, do inspections, which are things that Guiding Eyes for the Blind is, is planning to do. So we, we looked at everything. And the way, the way the state sees it is that the simplest remedy is to put a soil cap. Now, the clay cap is soil cap. And that's basically what, what we're talking about at the northwest central area of the site.
You had mentioned that within that one acre area, there's a well. Is that a test well?
No, I'm sorry. It's a monitoring well. It's a state constructed monitoring well, yeah. For testing, groundwater. And there's two other wells. If Joe should go back to the colored, I don't know if you can see it. Okay. The red dots off to the top, above the north arrow, there's a red dot. That's four. Okay? Down below to the south, on the left, there you go. Thank you, Joe. That's three, two, and then one. Now, these are approximations. The state didn't survey them. After things are capped, everything's installed and constructed, everything gets surveyed, including those wells. The access road, the limits of the cap, the grades. Because over time, you want to make sure that there's no settlement. You have to monitor that, that sort of thing. So they're taking on that responsibility.
So is that something that monitored through the town? Or is that something that we just say, you're going to follow through whatever the state and the DEP require?
Yes, it's the applicant's responsibility. They're taking it on as a voluntary cleanup and management, maintenance, if you will.
So it's not something that we have to bond for?
DEC sets the schedule on the maintenance for that?
Yeah, we submitted an inspection form, which deals with visual observations, periodic observations of, of, for erosional potentials and erosion potentials and the conditions of the cover, stormwater. If there's something that breaches, it has to be corrected immediately. There's a process that involves engineering and report submissions, that sort of thing.
So I guess at this point, I guess the question is that, does Guiding Eyes do the sampling or does DEC set a schedule?
The state? I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Does DEC set a schedule for Guiding Eyes to go in and send them back periodic reports?
The state sets the schedule. We proposed an annual inspection because I'm aware of that. That's sort of, that's done and that type of frequency. And the, the items that they have to look at, I'm familiar with. So for this type of application, this is not a major landfill. It's kind of a simple thing. But anyway, they would, we're working with them. And they would issue a deed restriction on how, that, that, that area is not to be used. It's not to be touched. And that would include periodic monitoring. That's all set up. So there will be at the end, a deed restriction. And it's not, that's the institutional aspect of it. But there's, you know, there's nothing beyond that that is complicated, you know?
It's not really a hotspot. It's just something?
Right, it's just something to take care of it. What we're trying to do is prevent infiltration, any further infiltration through the waste mass. There are sources on, you know, sources of, of, not contamination, but things break down over time and they're going to move with water straight down, gravity through the groundwater, and that's going to move offsite. And this here was observed to have also seeps coming off. And so they were also concerned, state and DEP were concerned about, and then that comes off into that stream from the surface. So that's all going to go away with the cap.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess I can talk to you about trees? Is that okay? Sure? Yes. Okay. Right, okay. So we can jump to that, that's fine. Okay, we received a, a quick memo from the Tree Conservation Advisory Commission. And we looked over the plans again. What we're doing right now is going back out to pick up additional trees because the design has changed. The survey that was done before was done for a, a form of design. So now, I guess we're looking at something that's close to preferred. It's like a really nice design. So now we're going to go out and we're going to pick up trees where the landfill road is, is, has changed. Okay? And there's some grading off to the northwest. Joe, do you have that plan? I'm sorry. That shows the grading coming off the back end of the facility?
I wonder if they ever found out who was the original dump?
Yeah, it's.
Because it was probably illegal.
It's this one? Sure?
There was a housing built around there. So whoever built those houses used that as a dump.
Okay. So here you have it. You see the landfill off to the top left. And as I mentioned, the road has changed. So you can see where the trees are kind of labeled on each side of the road because the road was going in at an angle initially. Now it's, it's got that jog. And so we need to pick up some more trees on each side of that, that road. And also for the stormwater, the permitted stormwater management practice that Joe's kind of circling. Up above that, there's a side slope which involves grading that wasn't there before. So we're picking up trees there. And then we're going to take all this information. And then we're going to work to manipulate things to avoid impacting trees, especially along the driveway. We looked at the driveway. We saw where initially we had seen where there's some specimen trees. We've avoided those. We've, we see only four as opposed to eight that were brought up by the commission. But certainly when we meet with them, we can make sure everybody's happy and get clear on that. As part of mitigation, we're looking to, Joe mentioned and David mentioned, we're doing wetland waterway mitigation. And so there'll be plantings with that. We have a landscape plan. So there's several plantings. That's not going to offset a lot of things, but it is somewhat substantial. And we're also looking to, Guiding Eyes is very much willing to fund any type of town project, recreational parks and recreational project. And we're looking to do some eradication of some of the invasives that are on the site. Go through the balance, the remainder of the woodland, go through the woodlot and see what can be eliminated in the way of invasives, especially the Oriental or the Asiatic bittersweet, which is terrible, which is absolutely terrible. And also some sort of mechanism to preserve the woodlot, what remains, which is substantial as a function of the 12.5 acre, 12.5 acre site. And we are looking to, we're seeking the board's consideration to forego, given the, the importance of the landfill and having that access road to get there. We're seeking the board's consideration to offset or not require mitigation or that, accept that as mitigation for wetlands and even tree mitigation. Because we are taking several trees for that purpose. But at the same time, we're putting in a, a landfill that is really important to have. A landfill cap, that is. That's, landfill cap.
I don't know.
Well, that, that's just, I just made that statement. It's not something.
Okay.
I don't know if that's in our jurisdiction though. Is it?
Okay, so I'm going to go on to wetlands? Waterways? Okay, do me a favor. Contemplate what kind of mitigation is required. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. Okay, on this plan, you see the green. And there's some small little green areas where Joe's circling his cursor. These are proposed adjacent wetlands. And these are good spots. There's hydroic soils within the profile near the adjoining wetland. In other words, these are not wetlands, but within that, a certain depth, there's water. There's hydroic conditions. So we're looking to excavate back, take advantage of that water. There are cobbles below a certain depth, like 20 inches. And that acts as a drainage layer. So you're seeing that water run through and that's what is bringing the water to the wetlands as well. So we're looking to create adjoining wetlands. There's six, E1 through E6. And also get into the stream that is parallel Route 202. There's a lot of trash that blocks flow. Flow has bearing on erosion, stream, stream bank erosion. And also there's one area to the west that I'll show you. I have some pictures. I'm going to show you this in a minute, in a second or two. And so that's a W1, we call it. But it's an existing side slope that's moist. It's within the wetland boundary. But it definitely would work great for some additional diversity. There are some barren, it just, there's vegetation, void of vegetation, some of these areas. And they have sufficient water to do some things out there. So Joe, if you can bring me to the first photo. There we go. Okay, this is E1. And this is in the adjoining upland area of the wetland that's been flagged. And you can see it, you see there's water in the hole. And that's a good sign. So these are the types, type of conditions. You can see there's some silt to the bottom left. And that is, is a hydroic indicator. There's also modeling that's very good. And so that's an example of what we're seeing in a way of the surface digs to confirm soil conditions for wetland mitigation adjoining the existing wetlands. Okay, next. What you have here is an example of the stream trash. And this has bearing on flow dynamics. And it's a, it's not a good thing. You have to have things flowing. And so at various points along the stream, we're looking to clear that up. Here is a severe erosion point. We have a proposal in for that. There is to the left side of this location nearby, a bank erosion. So we're looking to take care of that as well. So this will be picked up with, with plantings as well and some seeding to, to prevent any further erosion. Here to the west, an example of the hydroic conditions. And then you can, the next photo, last photo. Thank you. Here's what we're looking at. So here you have some stunted wetland vegetation. You can see some of the seeps mid-ground. And so we're looking to go into this area and create some diversity. It's a, it's a good application for that, very good location. And that's basically it. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
When you say increased diversity, are you actually contemplating creating wetlands?
Creating, there'll be some shrubs. You can put like spice bushium, shade, a moisture tolerant shrubs and ground layer. Yep, ground cover, right.
So you're really enhancing a wetland area?
Exactly.
You're not creating something that's not a wetland now?
No, we're taking that area and we're enhancing it.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Philip Greeley, Callio's Engineering Design. We prepared a traffic study for the site April of this year. The study included new traffic counts that were collected this year. We had projected out to 2026 as our design year. We included a background growth factor plus traffic for the CVS, traffic for Chipotle, traffic for, at the time when we did our counts, Taco Bell wasn't open yet, traffic for that. And traffic for the Wendy's application as well as, you know, some others along that corridor. In terms of, it's important to point out that when this site was evaluated for the synagogue, it was at the time when the Lowe's project was being designed and the improvements along 202 were incorporating the traffic that was estimated to be generated by the synagogue and the other activities on that, on the property at that time. So the improvements at Mohansick and Route 202 accounted for the traffic. And, and under this application, the peak traffic numbers would actually be less than the highest peak for the synagogue during event and other activities occurring there. So we, we've accounted for that in the background. We've analyzed the intersections. We looked at traffic along Mohansick Avenue. We looked at down to Weir Park Lane, the next main intersection south of here, and the ramps and where our traffic flow would occur. Traffic would arrive, we, we evaluated basically morning and afternoon peak hours. The traffic generation for this would, in the morning would coincide with peak hours, a little bit at the latter part of the peak hours. Staff would come in and then we, I think we have about 60 staff total. Then the vans would go out sometime around nine o'clock or after that when they would, you know, for training. And in the afternoon, the traffic would really occur a little bit before the afternoon commuter rush. So we're a little bit offset, but we've analyzed it as if it's all going to occur in the same peak hour periods. In terms of the access that was described, there's some vegetative pruning for sightlines, but nothing significant along Mohansick Avenue. In terms of the operations at the signals at 202, over time, there'll probably be some adjustments in some of the timing schemes there, but nothing significant. DOT has installed new video detection. And they're, you know, fine tuning that over time. Every, you know, updating, you know, timing plans and operations based on, you know, real-time data. So from a traffic standpoint, there are not really any significant impacts from this project. They were accounted for when the designs were being done for Lowe's and the improvements at the interchange and at Mohansick Avenue. And as I said, the peak traffic generation is less than what was considered in the, in the previous study. So that's pretty much everything that's contained in the study. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have final architecturals, but we do have some conceptual architecturals that are being finalized. We expect in the next month to actually be in a position to go to Ibaka and we would like to do so. We, we've shared some precedent images previously. Joe, we've got, this is the most recent. We, we will be back at your next meeting and we will have some renderings to show you. We would ask Mr. Chairman to be scheduled for a public hearing. We think we're at a point where you've got our full AF, you've got our supplemental studies. We've made a presentation of the empirical data that we have gathered as a team. And we think we are ready to go out to the public for the hearing. I would remind the board that we did have a public information session several months ago with.
February. Yes. It was February.
Yes.
Right.
With minimal participation, not a lot of public concern.
Right.
We've got one in August and one in.
We've got one in August, and one in September. So, try to, August, right?
We would love to be on the August agenda, i- if we can be.
Let's see, why not? Do we have to do a referral on this new set of plans to the different agencies on this?
Typically, every set that comes in, we refer, so I would say yes.
Okay, I would.
Yeah. I, I would just say some of the outstanding questions are what, um, Mr. Russo said about the mitigation. I think that's a large unanswered question. Um, I understand that there are some mitigation, uh, measures you'll be doing in this, along the seeps in the wetland area with some plantings and so forth. And for tree mitigation, I understand you'll be doing some invasive removal and things of that nature. But I don't know yet to what extent, I don't know if it's in this set of plans or not, but, uh, so I would keep that in mind when you're scheduling your public hearing, uh, whether or not there's enough information to be able to present to the community.
We should be fine.
That type of information.
We, we can make a supplementary submission, John, and try to answer your questions. We think we're ready to go to the conservation board as well, so, um. Tony, do you feel like you have, uh, you're ready to answer all these questions?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking to get some more data, and, and that will help.
What do you think? Are you having one or two meetings in August?
One.
I thought so.
August, uh, fourteenth. So you got three weeks.
Is that enough time?
Guys?
And we, we also need to, I, I would think, if the board wishes to engage our environmental consultant to look at the mitigation scheme and all of the data surrounding, uh, you know, the wetland intrusion and, and the capping and so forth. I think there's a large discussion to be had regarding whether or not you're accepting the cap as part of the mitigation or, you know, things like that, so. It's a little amorphous right now.
Is that gonna be enough time to have our consultant?
Maybe we need to wait one cycle.
Has, has anything been sent, John, to the, to your consultant, or nothing has been sent at all?
No, I don't think so.
What, try for September?
September.
Oh, you know, we, uh, uh, until this submission, we really didn't have.
Understood.
Enough for them to even, you know.
I think we're looking at September.
Yeah.
To be comfortable all the way around.
Um, is there any reason we can't go to Ibaka before that? If, does that help us time-wise, or?
Yeah.
No reason you can't.
Okay, so, um, if we can make a full architectural submission to staff, then we would try to get on Ibaka in, in the month of August, so we just keep moving forward. We will answer the questions that you have asked, um, during the month of August for the September date. Um, and John, if the consultant coming aboard in the next two weeks or so has issues or questions, we're happy to sit with them and make sure they get everything they need.
September?
Right, so we'll have to get a proposal from them.
I figured, yeah.
Give it to you, so you understand what's coming, then it goes to the town board.
September eleventh, yeah.
November eleventh is the next, is that first meeting in? Got it.
Slight process involved in that. The other thing I want to bring up, I think by way of reminder, because I think we did speak about it, is sound. Um, I know you've reconfigured everything. Um, so, the, the main facility in Yorktown, when it was last altered, went through soundproofing for the kennels. And I would expect that probably that was, would be needed here.
Right.
I know when they're with a trainer, they're at ease and calm. Uh, but when they're in the kennels, I think that are, the experience with the other application was that they can get each other to.
Going back, sorry to interrupt, but going back to one of the first presentations we made to you and to the town board, those kennels on Granite Springs Road are circa nineteen sixty-seven, six, some lately sixties.
Well, there was, there was a new one that was built.
Um, this, what we're proposing here is truly gonna be state-of-the-art with, uh, noise suppression built into these kennels. We will go into that when we have the full, um, architectural, and they will even have somebody from the architectural team come in. Um, but, uh, we hear you, John. And, uh, as to the southern property line, which is our property line closest to our residential neighbors, we think we have an adequate buffer there, but you should know, while we've shown no fence along that southern line, um, Bill has indicated if, if the board wants a, a fence of some kind, their guiding eyes will put the fence in. We're, we're.
Are you saying that related to the sound issue?
Yes, yeah. I mean, it would be additional sound mitigation. We don't know if it's necessary, but, but it could be done.
Yeah, I, I think that it's gonna come from the design of the building.
Agreed.
You know, it has to have the sound rating and go through all that sound design. And I think you'll probably have to have your architect hire a consultant to help with the design of that, so. And then you can really get it down to, you know, maybe your neighbors won't hear it, really.
Got it. Questions? I think we need to have the architect show up for, for our, uh, public hearing and present on that. Okay, yep. So we will see you all in September.
See you, yes.
Yes, I'm not gonna sing it.
I just wanted to make a comment. Uh, Bill, thank you for, for working with the small business. I know that, uh, you know, I brought up that concern, and you guys jumped right on it. And, uh, we really appreciate you, uh, keeping Yorktown your home. And, um, and we really, you know, the, the fact that you guys are such true community partners really rings true. It means a lot.
Everybody enjoy the balance of the summer. We'll see you in September. And we'll look to try to get to the Ibaka in August.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is, uh, located at 670 East Main Street, a residential site plan.
That triangular piece of property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Will Angelolo from Han Engineering, on behalf of the applicant tonight for six, um, 670 East Main Street. Uh, Robin, if you could pull up the site plan, that'd be great. Thank you much. So, last time we were here, uh, you sent us to the zoning board for the necessary variances. We have received those variances.
Oh, good.
From the ZBA, uh, passed along that resolution to the planning department. Um, we've also gone out and done soil testing at the site, uh, and prepared a SWIP and have submitted that as well to the town engineer. Uh, I have not heard any comments back on that yet. Um, we've also hired a landscape architect to consult on the planting plan. We have just submitted a conceptual plan, but we intend to provide a plan with more additional detail. Uh, but we've made a lot of headway and a lot of detail on the engineering aspect of the site.
Did the plan that, that we're looking at, is that the plan that you obtained the variances for?
Yes.
So what we're looking at is?
Yes, the building location is where it is, it hasn't changed since you last saw it.
And the variances allow that plan to happen?
Yes. Yes, the letter was very helpful.
All right, so not, so this is the same thing we've seen.
Yes.
And we, we want to move forward. We've had the public informational.
Yes.
What's the next step for us here? Are there any concerns or comments on what we have before us tonight, from the board?
You need a public hearing, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah.
I think this is ready for public hearing. There's a lot of data that they have. There may be some minor things to be added at this point, but I think the larger questions have been answered.
And, uh, that one we can do in August.
We could do that in August, right? You ready?
We, we'd be very happy to do that in August.
I'll bet. Can you, can the applicant handle August? It's gotta start from here, you said August.
I mean, he's on the beach in August, isn't he?
Hmm, all we need is three of us. Uh, anything, anything else, Jim?
Nothing for me.
All right, so why don't we schedule, um, through August? Which is the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Yeah, eight, fourteen.
I guess you lost your tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Did, um, did someone mention something about a tree, or, or, he's, no?
Did you save it?
And so, uh.
Steps, come, come, come up to the microphone.
Yeah. Um, prior discussions with the landscape architect, the critical zone around the tree as a forty-inch tree would be something like twenty feet in diameter, uh, in radius. Uh, her feeling was that because of the construction of the parking lot, you would severely impact the tree. Uh, to be realistic, we are showing it as being removed. Uh, during construction, it changes, of course. We'll, uh, address that during construction to save it, but to be realistic, we're showing it.
That was maybe a suggestion, that's all it was.
We wanted to make.
Yeah, right.
We truly did.
Maybe if you just keep a log and present it to him, you know, make him happy.
She's saying we're gonna lose it at a later date.
Yeah, once you do it.
I understand.
And if that thing comes down, it'll take half your houses away.
Give me a full-scale picture of the tree.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll come back in August on, okay, great. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Number nine on the agenda is a continuing discussion on a residential site plan for the Garden Lane Apartments, located on Old Crompon Road and Garden Lane. This is a twenty-unit proposal with parking and site plan improvements. I think the last time we were here, we were focusing on the res, the recreation piece. So let's see what you've got. Good evening.
Correct, good evening, how are you?
Okay.
So, um, yeah, as you mentioned, we're here more of an information session in preparation for the August meeting. Um, we met with John and Robin. Thank you so much, like, the Friday before Fourth of July. I know that was like the last thing you wanted to do before you headed out, but, uh, John gave us a couple of good suggestions, um, and also pointed us towards a project, a similar project, Crompon Crossing, to see what they did for their open space. Um, they'd had a walking trail, as well as, um, a swing set for children. So we definitely incorporated, incorporated that. In addition to that, selfishly, I, I could use help with my golf swing. So I got, um, a pitching area and a, and a, uh, putting and a driving area, some benches, a volleyball court, some bird watching, frisbee. So we think, we've, we've got, we've got things for everybody and some good amenities, amenities for the tenants as well. The open space requirements, eight thousand square feet, uh, we made that to code. The, uh, the rec area was, uh, just under sixty-eight hundred. We made, it's, that's ten percent of the lot. Uh, we hit that as well, and we also, like, that also includes the wetlands. So, and there were, there were some questions on whether or not we factored the wetlands into that ten percent, and we did. Um, and with that, I'll introduce Dan Sherman, who will show you the landscape plan of, uh, what we have envisioned and, and how we modified the plan to, to incorporate the rec space.
All right, thanks, Dan Sherman, landscape architect. I think Anthony just showed all the things we're concluding. But I'll just go, go over them again. We have picnic tables that we've put around in the, in the recreation area. There are four of these picnic tables, there's eight benches. There's a walking trail that loops through the recreation area and then it also links and goes around the building for dog walking and different, you know, for, not, it's not really jogging, but it's a walking trail. Uh, in the wetland area, not the wetland, but the rain garden, they have a birdhouse. Uh, and then there's two volleyball things that you can throw volleyball to, and they hit the net and fall into the little cage. So they crisscross the volleyball. This, uh, court area is, is the size for volleyball and badminton, that kind of thing. A little dedicated lawn for that. And the putting green, it's about twenty-five feet by fifteen feet. And within it is one of these, um, things that you can do, uh, driving range practice. It's a net kind of thing that you can shoot from the putting green right into that, walking trail. And that's what these pictures show. And this still leaves, not designated as our recreation space, but open space. That's a, a large lawn area for multi, multiple, right, you know, other things you could do. So there's a lot to do for a development like this, this would be a nice amenity.
I, I remember the chairman having a question about the grade that faces the, uh, I guess either the entrance or exit, depending upon how you're looking at it. Has that been changed, that, yes, that and that area? Has that been changed?
This is steep here, this does slope down, and that's just part of the open space. There's just part of the walking trail and some benches right there. But this area in the back is flat, is flatter. And these large canopy trees make a nice shady spot. These are, these show the canopy trees, but this, this is fairly flat.
So the grade towards the front has not changed?
No, it's just.
Okay.
Step up to the mic, please.
Sorry about that. So, based on the recommendation of the chairman, we relocated the rec area to the back.
No, I, I did notice that, but I was just questioning the grade on the front.
There's nothing active there.
No, that is correct, but, yes.
Yeah. So, okay. Any other comments? So where are we at? We, we've completed the public hearing process on this.
Yeah. Uh, we advise these guys to come and explain what they've done tonight. Um, but we expected a, you know, a larger agenda. So we also recommended that they be coming back in the August meeting. You know, to sort of tie some of these things up, and, and also when, you know, the chairman is back.
Okay.
Any, any feedback on, on the amenities, or anything else you'd like us to prepare for the next meeting? That's where we'd be in a better spot to address those, those concerns.
Yeah.
Okay.
On your drawing, the trash enclosures are in the upper right-hand in the parking lot up there, is that?
That's this.
Okay.
These are the residences, they're screened off, there's no residence here, this is the easement.
Okay. Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Best of the concern. Thank you very much, see you next month. All right. Number ten on the agenda is an application to, um, subdivision for a one lot, an additional one lot in the Brookside Village subdivision, Mucci Residence. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Jimana Carrico with Cronin Engineering, representing Matthew and Melissa Mucci.
Hi.
Uh, it's proposals, uh, for a single-family house. Uh, it'll be a modular. Uh, this is the last vacant lot in this five-lot subdivision from back in eighty-five, eighty-six. Uh, the, the house is in the location, uh, as originally approved, it's my understanding, um, for that subdivision, and it is zoning compliant. Uh, we have stubs, uh, well, we have a, we have a water stub that was installed, uh, during the original subdivision, uh, just up, up to the edge of the road, just past that, uh, that we'll be hooking up to for water. Uh, sewer, uh, will be, uh, installed to a manhole that's, that's just, uh, just off the, uh, the road, off the edge of the road. And, uh, we are proposing, uh, stormwater mitigation to capture the roof, runoff from roof leaders, uh, via Caltechs, uh, in the front, front yard of the house. There's some, uh, very minor grading, uh, proposed. Um, one, one difference from the original approval is, I believe, the, uh, first floor of the house was at four oh one elevation. Uh, we've raised this up to four oh five, uh, for drainage purposes, groundwater purposes. Um, you'll, you'll note that there is a, uh, conservation easement that runs, uh, to the, uh, to the back of the property. Uh, we're not proposing any grading, we don't need to go into that at all, uh, with any of the grading or any of the amenities. Uh, we have about eighteen thousand square feet of disturbance, total disturbance for the project. So just under half an acre, this is a almost two and a half acre lot, just over two and a half acre. Um, the Muccis have actually prepared their own tree mitigation plan, so, um, I can let them talk about that. Uh, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Your, your change in the finished floor elevation is up?
Up four, four feet.
What, what effect does that have on the proposed grading as it was originally, uh?
Uh, I don't know what, I, I don't, I didn't see the originally proposed, uh, grading plan, um, to tell you the truth. Uh, I would say it's, it's minimal in any way.
But it would most likely be beneficial, I would assume.
Yes.
So, in other words, you're not, you're not going down.
No, we're not going down.
So you're lessening the, the excavation or grading that.
Right, that's correct.
I mean, unless, I don't know, do we have Dan look at this to comment on that at all?
Dan, we, we haven't. We did submit a SWIP, sorry, John. Uh, we did submit a SWIP, uh, to Dan. Keith from my office, who prepared this plan, uh, did speak with, uh, Dan this afternoon. Dan had some minor comments. Main, mainly it was just. Keith from my office, who prepared this plan, uh, did speak with, uh, Dan this afternoon, Dan had some minor comments, ma- mainly it was just about reestablishing the, uh, swell. That was, uh, part of the original subdivision, uh, drainage plan, and we have no problem with doing that.
And, and is it a raised ranch, or what type of a house are going? So, so you're, you're gonna have a, a full foundation under the house, so the whole thing is just raising up four feet, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, you should probably get a memo or report from Dan on it, I think. Also some discussion maybe about, uh, limit of disturbance in, in a permanent sense, because the back of the lot, you, all of these properties are in the location that has a lot of wetlands, it's, it's. Halix Mill is behind it, so maybe establishing, you know, a permanent demarcation and limit there might be something that makes some sense.
Right, I believe Robin had that in her memo.
Yeah.
So you'd have some formal delineation between?
It's pretty close to the house, but we, I, we could come up with something, um. If you want it that close to the house, I mean, that, that's, you know, that would be, you know.
We don't have kids yet, but we're.
No, but if. Well, then they, they, they could move the fence, don't worry. No, but I, I, I was involved in a, in a property like that where there's a wetland behind it, and we kind of just set a di- a dimension from the back of the house, back. And allowed them to put a fence there, and that fence was then at a, at a known dimension.
Right.
So that if there was any intrusion beyond where the fence was supposed to be, it could be.
Right.
Demonstrated very quickly whether, whether it was kept where it was supposed to be or not.
Right, I, we've done.
So that kind of a solution, I think, would be helpful, because then you know where it is, and you know where you can go, where you can't go.
Right, right. Have done it that way, with a fence, like you say, split rail fence, something.
It doesn't have to be a, a closed fence, it just has to be a, a known demarcation.
Some sort of, some sort of demarcation, yeah, we've done it with boulders, uh, two cubic yard boulders and whatnot.
Exactly. Okay.
Anything else, so what's our next step here?
Uh, we, we can get them up back, uh, in August for a potential resolution, and in the meantime, we'll try to get Dan to, you know, expound on some of the things that he'd like to have happen.
Do you hear that, Dan?
Or tonight, he can do it.
Also like to mention that, uh, this past Tuesday, uh, they were at the Ibaka Board and received approval from them.
Just need to go to conservation?
Uh, yes, it should.
Okay.
And it will.
Alright.
If it hasn't already.
Otherwise, I don't have any.
No, it's not the year.
Concerns at the moment, the technical end is satisfied, right?
For the conservation, is that the tree permit? Because we are concerned with trying to get that done as soon as possible, we've had many trees fall, uh, from the recent storms, and one actually hit the neighbor's house and did some damage.
Wasn't mine.
So there's, there's many, like, for example, this big one fell, um, but it's dead. Sorry, I don't know if you can see this large tree, we were there last week and, and it fell, luckily it fell onto our property, so no damage was done, but there was another tree that did hit the neighbor, so we're hoping to get that done as soon as possible, I don't know if that is an option.
Did you, did you inventory the trees on the, at least in the dis- okay, so you're ahead of the gap.
Yes.
I think there is.
Or I believe you all have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have the.
Got it.
Yes, part of the submission, uh, included the, uh.
With the survey done, with all the trees marked, um, the types of trees, um.
Size, species.
Size, species, and then the ones that were planted.
Okay, great, that's good.
Okay. So that'll be, we go to the agencies and then we'll come back in August and, and see what happens, very good, okay. Thank you very much, see you next month.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Two more to go, number eleven is the, uh. I can't pronounce.
Go ahead, give it a shot.
Malandevich, Malandovich Residence, also Sanderson subdivision. Site plan. I don't see anybody. Oh, okay, site design, seventeen forty-five Croton Lake Road. Correct my pronunciation.
Um, so this is a. A site, um, that was part of the Anderson subdivision that Dan Ciarce worked on, uh, this is, this property is the last property on your left before you cross the bridge, uh, on one twenty-nine, at the reservoir.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the site plan, as shown, is, uh, shows the driveway and house location, it's, it's, uh, practically identical to what was approved as part of the subdivision. Um, we maintain the same roadway, uh, driveway profile, the house is almost the exact same footprint. In, I guess that, to, to put it in, 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 um, in one phrase, it's the same plan. Uh, so, um, I, as part of the subdivision approval, there was a condition where you had to come back to the planning board for site plan approval, uh, issuance, I'm sorry, issuance of the. Stormwater permit and the, uh, um, other per- wetland permit, because there are some buffer inclu- incursions, uh, accessing the site. And that's where we are. We've put together a complete set of drawings, um, it shows the proposed, um, stormwater treatment, uh, it shows where the septic system is. And, um, again, the driveway, and those again are, uh, you know, nearly identical to what was calculated on the first round.
How long's that driveway, Joe?
Um, I forget.
Very long.
It's long.
So you're saying basically that there's nothing, no significant differences in this iteration?
Yeah, there really is not, the grading is identical, the, um, again, all the stormwater aspects are identical.
Now, this has go, has to go out to the agencies as well, and I suppose we can pick this one up in August too?
Yes.
Any concerns from the board? Anyone? Okay.
Five hundred fifty feet.
Ah.
That's long. Where's the cut, uh, where does it come out onto one twenty-nine, the same spot that was being contemplated for the previous one?
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
Was it, was it across from, is it Bridgepoint Lane or something?
Yep, it was right across, right across, yep, the same spot. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Anything else?
No.
Okay, okay, so, um, what we, what's the next step for us on this, we go to, uh?
We're, we're gonna refer it around.
Okay.
And then, uh, you'll be back in August.
Okay. Thanks very much, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Alright, John.
Last item is a referral from the zoning board, uh, this is a Falcone application, set fourteen fifty East Main Street. An application to reconstruct an existing multifamily structure that was previously approved. For three dwelling units back in nineteen seventy-six, now they're requesting four, I guess that's the issue. Front yard variance of twenty-two feet is required, is requested, or forty is required.
Don't they have to get a, uh, the variance before they come to us?
Yeah, well, this is from the zoning board.
Oh, they said, they sent it to us, okay.
They want, we, the zoning board is referring to us, question is. Are there any particular planning issues, they're going up one extra unit, is that the main concern here?
Well, I believe that they will be removing the existing building.
Right.
And reconstructing, and apparently adding an additional unit, then there's, then that is already there. Uh, I want to point out that it appears as though it was originally approved as a special permit. Which, that section is for homes that were, you know, pre-zoning, so, earlier than nineteen thirty-two, I believe. And that there was a special permit to be able to convert them to either multifamily dwelling, you know, a restaurant or something like that, so in other words, the structure was retained, you got to use it in a way that you could. With some minor renovations, uh, this is entirely different, and I'm not sure. What their variance is, whether it is now a use variance or not, I, I'm not seeing quite that, do you know, Robin?
It says here, it's a front yard variance.
Nice old front, front doors.
We want to reduce the front yard setback.
Zoning board.
Right, they, okay, so there's a front yard variance, but nevertheless, if you don't have the original structure, the special permit allowing the conversion is no longer there. So I don't know, under what section of code they are varying from a single family zone, which this is, I believe, to allow four units.
That is a tough one.
That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna take down their reason for.
Having the three units.
Right.
That's right.
They're gonna eliminate that, and they're basically starting from scratch.
Scratch.
Right, which brings you back to the, you know, underlying zoning, which is single family.
Right.
So they, they, they're proposing four units in a, in a single family.
Yes.
They had the right to do three, now they want to do, they want to do four units.
But it's, it's three of the existing dwelling, and they're planning to knock it down and build new.
Yes.
And the building department is saying. The building department is saying they need a variance for the front yard.
But it seems to me like they're, they're removing their reason to go forward, or they're, they're.
Yeah, because now, now they have a blank slate.
Right.
And the special use permit doesn't apply.
Yes.
He was talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's.
The question, question for us is, you know, are there any planning issues that we want to bring to the zoning board's attention as they consider this request, okay?
Without knowing the limitations of the property itself, how do you?
It's just a building permit application they're going for.
Right, well, the planning issue would be.
Parking and.
Parking, having a multifamily in a single family zone, the character of the neighborhood, essentially all the stuff that you typically hear, so. I think that there's more at work than it seems here.
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe.
Absolutely.
It's a small site too, it's three quarters of an acre.
What, what's in its favor is its location, you know, across the street is two, two family, you know, like duplexes and things of that nature, um.
Walking distance is shopping.
To the east is some, you know, commercial, so, I mean, it has some of that in its favor, but, you know, one, one wonders why it's not getting a multifamily zone here to support the four families. If you're removing the old structure and your special permit cover.
If you remove the old structure, you lose the special permit?
That's, that's as I understand it.
I don't see how you don't.
You know, Jim, Jim can, you know, opine on it if he cares to, um, but, you know, I, I, I think if you don't have the original, um, reasoning for the special permit, it's really no longer there.
Yeah.
Well, it's like they're at, they have it there while they're asking for permission, and once they get permission, they're gonna remove it.
Yeah.
Which removes the basis of their permission.
Yes.
So I, I.
Is that structure currently inhabited? Do we know?
Oh, no, it's.
Uninhabited.
Oh, no, that, you know, we're on this.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, yeah.
It actually, I believe that it received a stop work order, because it's, you know, some clearing and trees were removed, and there was some initial work on the home, like, to. You know, a little demolition, you know, and then now it's boarded up, uh, and has, has been sitting there for a number of months.
I don't know, is that our purview to, to have the conversation about. Taking a, a building down that's the basis for your variance, I mean, it, I, I think it's the biggest issue. For me, whether that goes forward or not, other than how many parking spaces and what are your setbacks and stuff. But I don't think you get to that conversation without the underlying approval, and I, I don't see how they, I don't think, I don't see how the zoning board could grant that if the zoning board is doing that without input from us.
We should send them a memo back to that effect.
I, I think so, I mean, the, the planning issues, I think, are secondary, most of that. Unless anybody thinks differently, I, I don't see how they can ask for that.
You agree? Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it becomes a new build, once they knock the building down, it's a whole new.
Yeah. I'd agree too.
Yeah.
Are they gonna go four, four units up or four units sideways?
Sideways.
Ah-huh.
I believe there's a, uh, a plan of it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Is that it?
There's a lot more to it than this, I tell you.
Just out of curiosity, do we know if the current structure is municipal sewer and water, I mean, obviously it's water.
It's, has a sewer connection, John, do you know?
I can attest to that, I think it, it may, given where it is.
Yeah.
But I'd have to check that out for you.
Robin's saying it says existing septic.
The new per, the new one.
It says existing septic, but is it anything about connecting to the sewer line?
Previous abocation that was here before us, near Main Street, we knocked them down from five to, you know.
Yeah, yes, we did. So does the zoning board get to make the decision of allowing four units? Do they do that?
It would be a, I think it would be a use variance, that's the only way I see, see it.
Use variance. What did, what did the, uh, building department say?
They just.
Is it intensification of a non-conforming use, is that what they're rushing?
I think at least somebody should have been here from the.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, here, here, here.
And, and Main Street, we just knocked down, Main Street, five units down.
I think you need a lot more information on this application.
Yeah.
This, I mean, I don't know if they're proceeding on the theory that it's a non-conforming use, and that this is an expansion or an intensification of a non-conforming use. I don't, I don't know what the rationale is.
Will you reform, you remove the building, you remove the non-conformity?
Well, it's, I don't even know that it's non-conforming right now, because you, there's a special permit allowed in that zone for.
Three?
For older structures, that you can convert them to either, you know, a restaurant or a multifamily, which they did in nineteen seventy-six or four. So right now, I don't think it's not conforming, I think it has full approval.
No, but I'm saying, yeah, but I'm saying, once you remove the building.
Then the four units, the proposed four units.
Then your non-conformity evaporates.
Yeah.
Because it no longer is there, so.
That's true.
So theoretically, you go through all these approvals, as soon as you take the building down, the building inspectors would walk in and say, approvals for a new building.
But the exact language on the special, the special use permit, that's what it says, the old building has to stay there, right?
In order to gain that special permit, you have to have the old structure.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It's to accommodate the old structures that you can convert them, which, which was a, which was a normal thing to do back then, because homes were a little bigger. People put, cut them up into small apartments, you know, to keep it financially viable.
Right.
And so, I mean, there's the, well, the house down on, uh, one twenty-nine, that was converted to apartments. You know, has the mansard roof, that's one of them.
I think we should send back a memo to the zoning board indicating our concerns with the, you know, the underlying legality of what they're trying to do. And if they are indeed trying to get four units in there, it's gotta come back for site plan review for us, for parking and everything else.
Yeah.
Even though the building department memo just identified only one variance needed, I think there's a lot more planning issues.
Yeah, because even if it's, we're two family, right, it's a single family zone right now, right?
Yeah.
So they knocked that building down, it's all brand new, they backed it to.
Yeah.
It'd have to be rezoned.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, because you, you extinguish your non-conformity.
Right.
And so by proposing a, a four be, four unit, you're increasing your non-conformity. Beyond what it was before you took the building down.
True.
I, I don't get it.
So we, we recommend, I would recommend that they denied this at this point, or not, not, you know, proceed.
Or explain to us something we're maybe missing, I don't.
Well, the applicant should have been here.
Right.
Would we, just out of curiosity, would we kind of think it different if they were renovating the existing structure?
I would.
Right?
Yeah, because you're, you're, you're changing your existing non-conforming use.
Of course, right.
Now, you could argue whether you're increasing the non-conformity by expanding it, or if you're working within the same footprint, then I would argue that you're not, but.
Well, I, I had one, you know that building across the street next to the school with the turrets at the end?
Across the street from which?
On the other side of the street, just near the, near the high school, there's, there's a building up, and it's got two.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Right.
So I did a, a variance for that a number of years ago, where we went from four to five or something, but the structure was historic, you know, it was old.
Right, right. Right, right.
We took advantage of it.
Right. But you didn't change the footprint of the building.
No, we didn't change the footprint. We didn't do any of that.
This is changing everything.
I know.
So. I think, given the way they're proposing this or the way we're seeing it, it doesn't work. If they're going to say we're going to keep the foundation and the and the building, you know, a part of the building or something.
They're doing a brand new building.
They're doing a brand new building.
It's got to come here.
I just, I don't see it. I agree.
Got enough, John?
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
I'll circulate. I'll circulate it to you by email, so before it goes.
I guess it. Nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Rich, wherever you are.
Good to our audience.